How you doing?
Good.
Good.
You got the gong show over there?
I might.
The grandkids, "Where are you? Come visit."
Kelly, is Alex gone again yet?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. Flying or driving?
Driving.
Colorado?
A moment of silence for you. I already gave her my positive vibes. I was like, bless you and all those smiles.
Are you flying back? Okay, good.
She's gonna be gone for like a whole week. I was ready to almost see how much it would cost for me to pay just to ship the car.
Do you have any like stops on the way to like, or do you have to just get there?
We need to be there by Thursday night, so.
Power through.
We'll stop one night, so I can't do that long.
I brought my boat back up from Florida. That's an adventure when you're trailing a giant pontoon boat that you don't want to go over sixty-five miles an hour with.
Is it a three-barrel or two? Ponto?
Two. Part of why I brought it back up, it was a little, it really wasn't the right boat for Florida. You felt a little.
I'm still okay on the wake-up here.
Right, I feel you feel good down there. You're a little inadequate, you know.
Two barrels probably safer on a lake versus the.
And then even just the, I only have a fifty horsepower. I mean, it's like half the time, if you have a stiff current, you're better off going to another dock.
Yeah, we had a, ours was an eighty-four pontoon. We had up at the lake and my uncle was able to get enough to buy the new trailer for the new boat. Nobody wants an old pontoon anymore.
Nope. We good?
I think so.
Well, the school committee meeting for Monday, August twelfth. And it's a ten, a motion to approve the bills, please. So moved.
I'll second.
Any questions, conversation, comments? All in favor? Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes from the July fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four school committee meeting?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, questions? All in favor? Do we have any public comment tonight? That's okay. Okay, now we'll close that and CTA. Welcome.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to let you know, just introduce our new executive board for this school year. Tom Duggan, which maybe you met last time when I couldn't be here. As vice president, Janet Carey is our treasurer. Harold Ogilvy is our interim secretary. Paul Zapantis is our high school building rep. Justin Murray is our middle school building rep. And Stephanie Isahariadis and Emily Beatty are elementary school building reps. And CTA is sponsoring a luncheon for the new teacher orientation next Thursday, I think it is.
Wednesday or Thursday, whatever.
Something like that. For the new hires, so the executive board is really looking forward to meeting and welcoming the new teachers. Let's see. Oh, I have a meeting scheduled with Becky from PTA, so we're trying to form a stronger bond between PTA and CTA, so looking forward to that. And CTA especially, CMS is looking forward to a new school year and welcoming Tyler at our helm. So, we're good? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from CPAC? Or LPAC?
PTA.
PTA. Oh, PTA, yes, please come on up.
Thank you.
Must've been a Freudian slip from the Facebook. My bad.
It's okay, you're trying to get that into the routine. All good. What about Numia anymore? We haven't done anything in the last.
So, hi everyone, it's Emily with your Clinton PTA. Membership opened July first. We have forty-four members signed up, which is almost halfway to what our membership was last year at the end of the year. So our goal is over three hundred. So we hope to get to that, obviously. We have been at block dances on Thursday nights, raising funds through concessions and selling nothing but cakes. Becky has been working super hard with the board members to do two trivia nights that raised over nine hundred dollars. Our calendar raffle is still available online for the month of August. It's ten dollars per ticket, per chance to win. And we'll skip right ahead to the awesome thing that is, we have a hard copy of what our twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five calendar looks like. And it is so pretty. It took a lot of love to put this together. We're having three hundred of them. They should be in our hands on Friday. All members will receive one when you pay your membership. And they'll be for sale for twenty dollars at PTA meetings and events for the general public. So not only did we work with administration for the district, we worked with LPAC. Kelly was phenomenal at helping us get access to rooms and meeting space. PTA meetings are on here, LPAC events are on here, the school calendars, the school committee, it's all in one spot so that people can see it. And then we had over twenty-nine businesses sign up to sponsor the business card ads that are inside. And when I left our last meeting, I had a call the next day with Clinton Savings Bank, and they stepped up and did a five-hundred-dollar sponsorship to get their stuff on the front page and on every page inside the calendar. Which was huge because we didn't sell all of our ad space and we just made it to cover our cost. But I think once people start seeing it, and we'll make back a lot of money and increase our membership at the same time. Our first meeting will be Thursday, September fifth, at six fifteen. Our meetings will be at the administration building in the conference room. That is a change for us for this year, which works out for scheduling. We don't have to interfere with anything that's happening at schools event-wise, space-wise, which we're grateful for, and all of our supplies are already at the central office. So if we need something, it's all right there. And then Becky's amazing idea for Old Home Day. No surprise, we are having a book fair at Old Home Day in Town Hall Friday night and Saturday. With, we've partnered with Scholastic, they're working with us to do a K through eight and all the tchotchke stuff. So if your kids want erasers and pencils and pointers and the laser pens and invisible ink and all that fun stuff, they can come get it that day, but not during school. So we will be at Old Home Day. And we'd like to thank Matt Cobus and the Old Home Day Committee and the town of Clinton for helping us with that opportunity to raise some additional funds during Old Home Day. So I think that's about it for now. If you'd like to sign up for your membership, the link is on your page.
I'm just signing up for that membership. I might even give you another twenty for the calendar, too. It's probably like my tax, right?
We would greatly appreciate that.
I should probably give you thirty tonight.
Yes, and when you do, I'll give you a calendar.
Very good, thank you.
I'll drop it right at your house.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Good to see you.
Thanks.
All right. So we'll start with just some staffing updates. Summer's always a busy time. You can see, we hired a lot of IAs recently. The IA postings, typically what happens is as, at the end of the year, when IAs maybe resign or less, and then they're coming back, you normally kind of hold off on those postings until a little bit later in the summer so that we can really identify our student needs. So there's been a lot of those recently, even though a lot of them have been positioned, they're not new positions, they're positions that we kind of knew about in the spring, we just didn't post till now. We hired Brian McDonald, seventh grade science teacher. Megan Gilbert Davis as a part-time middle school clerk, school year clerk. And then the IAs, we did have a resignation. Sam Cutler, a grade-two co-teacher left, but we did.
Did we hire her replacement recently? Did I just meet with her?
Yeah, so we're full on that. So we're pretty much, I think the biggest probably position that we haven't filled yet that we really are working on is the middle school band. And we reposted that one again. Yeah, so we're working on that. And we have some contingency plans in mind if we have to, and we were gonna discuss those a little bit more in the, our admin meeting on Thursday, if, just so we have a plan. Athletic updates. Oh, she's here, all right. So there's a handout in your packet, but our new director of athletics, Jen Govan, is here, so I'll let her share a little bit. I know she was here tonight because she was meeting with the fall coaches to go over some stuff.
They're still in there, they're having pizza right now with the. I said, take over and be back in a minute, so thank you. Jennifer Govan, very happy and proud to be here. It's been a great start. We've started some new programs and looking to kind of report out on that information. So again, our coaches are in a coaches' meeting, this is the first coaches' meeting they've had in quite a while. Going over, we've developed a coaches' handbook, I'm working with them on some finals with that, which is great, kind of deciding what needs to be in there, what doesn't need to be in there, and then following our compliance as well, making sure that's listed for them. So going over all that information will take about three hours tonight to complete everything, so it's a lot to go over. But they're great, I'm excited to work with them. And again, we kick off this Friday, so it's good. So just to kind of, what we're doing, registration will be on final forms for beginning this fall, so that was a large kickoff. We started working on developing that final forms registration platform, again, keeps us compliant with everything that we need to have and collect from our student athletes and from our parents and caregivers, as well as gives them all the information that they need. So there's a new athletic handbook that is also in there, just kind of again, playing with that and tweaking it as we go over this next year, making sure we cover everything the students need, coaches need, and our community is looking for. So that is good. Prior to registration on final forms, again, it'll be a kickoff over this next week, we do have registrations already coming in on a separate form, so I'm able to track all those. Again, I will use that as our backup, depending on what we look at and kind of combine it with final forms, and I think the big transition will be in the winter season, so I'll probably be using both, just talk to coaches about what that looks like. Cheer at this point, we have sixteen registered cross-country, we have sixteen girls' cross-country, ten, I'm sorry, six for boys, ten for girls. Field hockey, we have thirty-three, football, thirty-nine, golf, thirteen, boys' soccer, forty-nine, girls' soccer, thirty-three. From the data that I have pulled, we're still down a little bit, but also pretty typical at this point. People are all of a sudden getting back now from vacations and looking to register, which will be nice because those have not registered on the Google form, and they will see final forms and be able to really upload all the information there. When I say upload, it's a great item for them to use. They can upload all their physicals, all the information, any sign-offs happen right there, and we can track that information for any questions that come across. Also, there's a physical countdown, I think that's the biggest debacle sometimes, is trying to get those physicals in. One, our physicians only have so much time, they're booking too far out, and we're missing that. This gives them a countdown. Sixty days in advance, they'll start, they'll get notices to both the students and the parent, or guardian, that they need a physical. So it gives them that time to make sure that they get that booked, so it's nice. It's a good asset and a good addition to the department. Again, fall coaches' meeting tomorrow, I will host a session, I had to alter some times just because we have some CPR training going on as well. Tomorrow I'm going to be in the library from twelve-thirty to two-thirty, assisting with any final forms registration that needs maybe some help or some guidance through that. I've worked with Krista Hand, he is bringing in Chromebooks, they're all set up, the link will go right to there, and we can get them registered if they need assistance. I will do that again on Wednesday evening. Before I leave tonight, everyone on our list currently will get that information saying if you need help, this is the days that we're using it, and then again, open for other days as needed. I think that would be a big help. The parent, guardian, student athlete meeting is another meeting that's kind of new to our, to the Clinton community. It will be August twenty-seventh. And that will be in our auditorium for the entire fall coaching staff, all of our community members that would like to join, our parents, our guardians, and our student athletes. Again, going over all that information, making sure they're aware, and then they'll break out to all of coach meetings for their specific teams, and they'll go over all the expectations, what's happening for the season, communication, what to look for, and any questions that they may have so that they can support those student athletes. So I think that's another good addition that we are, that we're adding on, so that we can really get in with parents and guardians, kind of make sure that they know what's happening, hear their feedback. And last night we haven't been going to, I actually had my first meeting with the Booster Club, so really trying to partner with them and work to better that partnership and how can we increase our students using the boosters to do fundraising and kind of getting it, I want to say, on par. We're gonna have a little bit of a request, how we're gonna do requests and how we're also gonna deliver the funds back out. Any questions? That was a lot, I know.
Do we have, we don't have any co-op in the fall?
No, we do have co-ops in the fall, I'm sorry, no, we do not have co-ops in the fall.
I couldn't think of any either while I was sitting here.
Yep, sorry, nope. There is no co-ops, just let me think for a second. No, co-ops are in the wintertime.
Winter and then lacrosse in the spring.
Yep, so you have ice hockey, girls and boys, and then you have wrestling and swim and dive in the winter, and then in the, in the spring you'll have both lacrosse teams. Yep, so it's great.
Good to see you again, Jen.
All right, thank you guys so much. Again, reach out if you have any questions. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Correct, we have still no fees, and I know Jen's been, she's really hit the ground running, and we had multiple meetings, and she's always looking at her budget and what's been allotted for her and trying to, as she assesses different needs, look at how maybe we can move some things around to make sure she's addressing those programs and stuff, so I think it's moving right along, so hopefully we should look forward to a great fall season. All right, I had a couple of updates on here, just the MASs Executive Institute, I did go to that right after our last meeting, so I was down at the Cape for a three-day conference there. That was a good conference, it was good, we get to get some legal updates on things like Title IX, I met with the DESE, they ran a session on some stuff on English learners that I went to, and also another focus group with the, focus session with the DESE on the new health and physical education frameworks, which are really way more than just health and PE, they really involve a lot of like mental health and stuff that kind of goes across the curriculum, so it's really kind of a bigger thing that their messaging was really that you can't just say like you're gonna cover this in health class, right? It's gotta be something that you're kind of embedding through advisories or morning meetings at the elementary school and that kind of stuff. So we'll continue to unpack those this year, the state's offering some continued trainings on sort of unpacking what those mean as we go, but they're basically saying that it's not, you know, don't think of it as just a standalone like new curriculum for your health class, and it's not like you're just gonna buy a book, like you kind of gotta look and unpack it and figure out where does everything live. Also went to the One Eight Applied Learning Leader Summit, that was last week. And so the One Eight Group sponsors a lot of applied learning activities that we do, including Project Lead the Way, as well as things like ST Math that we have at the elementary school. So it was, it was nice to go kind of meet with them. The two main breakout sessions I went to down there were, one was on a civics curriculum that they have, that's supposed to be more of like a hands-on applied learning civics curriculum for eighth graders, now that there's kind of that civics exam. I'll share some of that with our teachers later this year to see, it's an open source curriculum, so it's one of those things that you can, you can pull from if they like it. And the other one I went to was also, was on artificial intelligence, and basically understanding artificial intelligence and trying to understand like what role does it play and how can, you know, when can you use it? When can you, when should your students be able to use it? What are some of the limitations of it? And they did some neat things with some demonstrations, there were people from MIT there where they took kind of like the same data set, and they would like sort of ask sort of these artificial, ask artificial intelligence like some questions, and if you ask the right question, you got really good answers. But when you didn't ask quite, quite the right question, it would interpret the, it would give you an answer, but it was garbage, right? But it sounded nice, but it was garbage because it didn't really match the data set, but it didn't know enough to catch that, like the data set really didn't make sense for that, for that question, right? So it's sort of just understanding how it works, what it is. We do actually have some professional development lined up, not for the first two days of school, we were able to line it up for our September PD day on artificial intelligence, because we think it's one of those things that's just, it's like, it's almost like cell phones, it's gonna, I feel like it's gonna continue to grow, and that you need to understand that, you know, the, you're never gonna be able to just keep running around saying, "Don't use it, don't," I mean, everything's being run by it right now, so you need to understand how do you, how's, how can you use it and how can you make assignments that, what does it look like to have an assignment that really AI wouldn't necessarily help you with, right? So it was good, it was a nice conference. It was a one-day thing, but it was good. And then, so that's all I had from those updates, and then Title IX, nondiscrimination policies, and I think one is an equal opportunity employment policy, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight policies in your handbook. These are all, these are all MASs, MASC model policies. So there was a change to Title IX, that change went into effect August first, so this is essentially updating our policies to incorporate the Title IX changes. I think the main, the main one that's changing in a lot of these is when you go through the list of like, we can't discriminate individuals on the basis of race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, religion, disability, age, genetic information, active military veteran status, marital status, familial status, pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions, homelessness, ancestry, ethnic background, national origin, or any other category protected by state or federal law. There was a couple added in there, I think maybe sex characteristics or sex stereotypes were added in there, so in a lot of them, that's sort of the main change in these policies is just updating the nondiscrimination clause. Some of them also, the policies, the procedures changed a little bit as far as if someone makes a claim, how do you have to investigate them, what you have to use as a notice for, was updated in here. So what I'd ask you, they're pretty blank, they're pretty generic, but they really are written in from a compliance standpoint, so if you're willing to approve these just as is, waive the two readings. That would be ideal as a motion, because we gotta, basically we have some of them in the handbooks right now that we're gonna read anymore. If you're concerned about it and you want to do first reading, second reading, we can, we'd still get them approved the two days before school starts.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve them and waive the two readings.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. And if we have anything that comes up with it, we can always, if there's any more that comes up, because it's still, there's still gonna be more ongoing Title IX training and stuff that as admin we'll be doing, if anything comes up that we have questions, we can revisit it later, but this iteration at least gets us compliant with the law. All right, goals and plans for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. So we had a couple of days of admin meetings last week, and one of those was with Commonwealth Consulting, or at least for part of it, and we kind of reviewed our goals from the year before. Sorry, I'm just trying to get here. All right, and we realized is our overarching goals as far as continuing to evaluate, refine, implement a multitude system of support, supporting all students, is really that, we're not gonna change that goal, that's something we've been working towards, still looking at things like grade level material, removing barriers in individual support, so we're still keeping the same focus of goals. A lot of it's because a lot of the work we did last year was planning changes for this year that's really gonna help us achieve these goals. I tried to, on the next page, sort of show some of these, what does that look like this year? So as far as access to grade level material, it'll be us, as I mentioned before, unpacking and trying to adopt the new Massachusetts Health and Physical Education frameworks across the curriculum, continuing our implementation of Open Up Resources Mathematics, which is actually, was another program that we bought to support that implementation, but we'll have Looney Math Consulting as a support for those teachers, and continuing our implementation of Appleseed's early curriculum, early literacy curriculum, that's ongoing work that we're doing with the DESE and TNTP. We'll talk about like removing barriers, we're still continuing to expand co-teaching at the middle school and for special education and English learners at CES, and that'll get some support from Commonwealth Consulting to support that initiative. We have some asynchronous courses we're gonna be able to offer, we use some of our ESRA money to kind of purchase these asynchronous course offerings so that our teachers can take these courses, we're hoping to encourage teachers to use these courses for their professional practice schools, because they're basically free courses they can take to them, they'll get PDPs for them, and then some of them will count, for example, like empowering multilingual learners is one of those courses. For recertification, you have to have like fifteen PDPs at least in English learner instruction, right? So that would cover that, right? So some of these things will help our teachers also with recertification, and we'll be continuing the ST Math implementation and professional development, and that's one of those things, we say it's removing barriers, it's really, ST Math's whole thing, if you're not too familiar with it, is it's a math program that's sort of set up as kind of like games or more like puzzles, and there's no words to it. So you kind of gotta like figure out what they're doing, so it's like, you know, if there's, you know, triangles on the ground and there's circles with different pieces of pie missing, like which circle could you roll to get it to go across, and you have to kind of like visualize those types of things, or, or different, you know, different types of problems, this is one I remember, but. So the idea is it helps you, it helps promote that deeper learning, that understanding of the mathematic concepts and how the geometry relates and all those different things without language as a barrier, right? So it's one of those things, and that's one of the things, like I said, it's a deeper learning one that research-based at the One Eight Foundation is also supporting. And then for some of our individual supports, we do have an additional reading interventionist at CES this year that we were able to sort of work in through the, between our grants and staffing, partly because one of the reading specialists will be out for a while, so it's sort of how we're backfilling for that leave and then trying to keep that person on the rest of the year, so we'll have more of a caseload, or more of a capacity. The middle school, we have a new schedule with an adjusted wind block, where we're kind of attaching the wind block to the periods in a rotating schedule with hope that that can be a little more productive for all students. And then the freshman and sophomore experience at the high school, those new courses that they'll be taking with some customized smaller classes to meet their needs. So those are the main things that, you know, kind of the big things we'll be working on this year, or we have in the works, we started that last year, so we're keeping those, keeping those going. School improvement plans, the high school school improvement plan is in your, in your handbook, it's, it's gonna be, you know, very similar to the overarching goals we just talked about, the elementary one is in there, too, it's also tied to those same goals, it's a little bit more how they get down there. We don't have a middle school improvement plan in here. Jen, Principal Lamontaine last year did some work with kind of our district plan with her school council, but we're gonna give Principal Steffi some time to kind of relook at that plan with his school council to start the, to start the school year. So that'll be in there, and then we have the handbooks. So the handbooks are, you should have had all the school's handbooks as an insert in your packet. The only one that I think we need a vote to formally approve officially is this high school, and I gave you a page, this was in your packet, but when we made one of the Title IX changes at the last minute, because we got that information, it screwed up the page numbers, so this new one has the right page numbers on the changes. I don't know if there's any, Principal Sirmak, I don't know if there's any changes that you want to highlight or go over for them, or if anyone has any questions on them?
That's up to you. If there's any things you'd like to go over, I can, if you have any questions for the line, make them so.
So I guess, I mean, in a, I would need a motion to at least accept the high school handbook, you're welcome to kind of endorse all three handbooks if you, if you want to make that motion, but at a minimum, we need the high school one approved according to the statute. And like I said, if you have any questions, if you're concerned about the handbook or the changes, we can, we can ask Mr. Sirmak any questions that you have. But he, I know that this review of this was done with your school council last year. That's one of the charges of the school council is to review the handbook, and that's one of the things that they do during that year.
Steve, was there any further discussion? I remember there was one meeting we had discussion around the cellphone usage plan that they have, and then talking about, it's like, do we over-rotate in regard to kids being able to use cellphones during tutorial? And then talking about, it's like, do we over-rotate in regard to kids being able to use cell phones during tutorial? We had that one item that we had talked about at one time. I mean, is that, is that, are we, are we stand and pat it when we are? Or are we entertaining that being a possibility for kids?
I don't think we changed anything on that impact right now.
No, the cell phone policy has not changed. So it'll be lunch and always homework.
Okay. Cool. Thanks.
I, I always question the homework.
The 10 minutes, uh, grade?
Is that per, that's not per teacher, can't be.
No, that's supposed to be per total.
Okay, so if you're in the, if you're in the ninth grade, you should have an hour and a half of homework.
But if you figure you have seven teachers, that means you get like 12 minutes you're allowed to give them.
Okay, all right, okay.
So in, in the way we used to bring it up, or break it up when I was teaching is the course on third areas would, would, upstate more time, 10, 15 minutes, whereas an elective day will take five minutes or not give more than that.
And if you were gonna give something that took longer than that, it was fine. But you should give like a few days to do it, right? If you knew it was a longer assignment, you might say, "Okay, this is what you should be working on the next three days or do Friday."
I just think extracurricular activities and sports and...
It is kind of, I think that comes actually from one of our policies that we have. We can make a note to maybe look at that policy in general because I think someone else asked me about that policy as well, the, the homework times and are we still going by them? But I think it's, I think it's actually in one of our school committee policies. So I'll look at the, look at that. Maybe that's something as a policy subcommittee could review and see if we want to phrase it differently. Because it does seem a little arbitrary that sort of like just, the rule of thumb is 10 minutes times your grade level, right? Yeah, yeah.
May I?
Yeah.
So I think it's a very general rule too, it depends on what kind of courses you're taking. If you're in CP level courses versus all of your AP level courses, you may not in CP level see that 90 minutes or 120 minutes if you're senior. Or if you're at AP level, you may see more than that, if that makes any sense.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a very general rule to follow for, I think, teachers and just the expectation.
But I believe the way the district policy is worded, if I can remember, it's like it goes K to 12. So it's really even saying that first graders should have 10 minutes of homework, second graders should have 20 minutes of homework. And we're really not doing much for homework besides like reading at that level and those types of things. So, um, so it might be the type of stuff that we want to just sort of modernize that a little bit and look at it. So I think for now it's fine. We use it kind of as a guideline just to kind of make sure you're saying you really shouldn't be slamming kids with homework. And if that's the total, they should have a night, but maximum. But, um, but we can, we can double-check it. And I think, I just think historically too, I think over time, like I just mentioned, like artificial intelligence and that kind of stuff, like a lot of stuff like homework, a lot of homework is, it's tough because a lot of times now it's what are you really, what are you getting back, right? Like whose work is it? You know, because you can pretty much have, I could go home and probably, you know, you used to be able to say, like, show your work. Where I could probably go home and type every math problem into some AI thing and say, "Show work and solve the problem." And I could get it all done, right? So it's trying to, um, you know, just make sure that we're, we're being intentional about those things too as we move forward.
Steve, I'm sure this is just like, um, housekeeping, but on the 24, 25 high school plan, I assume the kids that are 20, 24, they'll be replaced as we have elections?
Yeah?
Or are they under student members?
We have, for which one is that? What pa, uh...
Just the front page.
Oh, you're in the school improvement plan?
Because, because we don't have, we don't know who's gonna be what.
Right, right, right. So the school improvement plan would be, that's...
I was gonna say, these kids are dedicated if they're still on.
That's...
Like, good for them.
That school improvement plan was li, written by last year's school council, right? So they ended the year with it. Uh, so there'll be new elections for anyone who's not up this year or replacement with, uh, positions that are there. Yeah.
So I'll make a motion. I think you're, we still, we have to make a motion.
Make a motion too? Do you want to approve all the handbooks, high school handbook? What do you, what's your...
Yeah, I think...
We just really need the high school one, but as long as you guys are fine with the other...
I'll make a motion, we approve all the handbooks.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Um, we've got one more thing in here, which is a staff, um, acceptable use policy for, um... We, we updated the policy a while ago. We didn't really update their form that they signed. Uh, so this is really just the, uh, acceptable use policy sign-off. This has been, it was crafted by Krista Han. It was reviewed by our, uh, attorney. And she, we've incorporated her feedback. So I would just look for approval for this, uh, acceptable use policy for staff.
Guess I'll make that motion.
All right.
Kind of waiting for that into the table. You guys are running such a roll, I didn't want to bother you.
Motion made in second and any discussion, questions, concerns? All in favor?
All right. Thank you.
I know.
All right.
Give you a chance to earn your money. You're doing such a good job, I didn't want to cut you.
I had, uh, opening a school on there, but there's really just sort of a catch-on case if there was anything I needed to cover. I did send out an email to parents today. They had some information on opening a school and some links, um, to different things. Uh, we also sent an email out to staff today that had a copy of a letter that we sent out. We mailed hard copies today to staff with letters that will have their salary and evaluation information in it so that they can check that, so we can try to make sure that we're all on the same page for that in time for the first payroll of the year and all that kind of stuff. So, um, that's all moving along. The first day of school, just to get it on record, is the Wednesday, the 28th. Staff will come back on the 26th. Kindergarten and pre-k will start that following Tuesday. FY25 budget came out. Uh, there's, the final cherry sheets are in here. Um, the first thing you gave, I showed you is the estimate sheet because the estimate has, it just shows you the changes over each of the iterations. And then the final sheet is in there. Our, uh, chapter 70 really has held steady since the, uh, the House budget. So we've been, uh, that didn't change in the final budget. I think the only, uh, thing was our school choice went down about, uh, $14,000. I don't know the exact reason. I'm sure there was a, a claim or something that was updated that, based on an address or something that changed it because that's usually how that works. And there wasn't, so there wasn't a whole lot else that changed. So we should be, and our sending tuition went down a little bit as well. So both of those went down. So we'll, uh, so that's nothing too exciting on that front with the final budget. I did have a sheet in here where I tried to put our entitlement grants into perspective for you. The entitlement grants, um, there was a lot of actual conversation at the MASs conference about these. At one time, the federal government was looking at, at almost eliminating some of these grants this year. And then I think they kind of got some of them to level funding and then some of them are a little bit of a cut. So like our Title I Part A went down 14,000, um, which is not a huge cut, but typically it goes up, say 14,000. And that helps you cover the, you know, if you're carrying staff in that grant, that helps you kind of carry the increase of raises or colas or anything like that. Uh, Title II Part A went down a little. Title IV went up, which we have some discretion on that. We can flex from that into the other grants. So we'll be able to do a little bit of that as we're putting our grant applications together. This E, uh, IDEA grants, the special education grants went up a little bit. That's kind of like a normal sort of ra, increase. Our Perkins, um, vocational education grant went down a little bit, and Title III went down a little bit. Overall, if you look at those major entitlement grants, the net is a reduction of $7,800 over last year. We'll be able to absorb that as we write our, as we write our grant proposals this year, I'm sure. And we also have a little bit of carryover funds. Some of those grants you can carry over. So a lot of times, um, you can only carry over like maybe 10% or something like that, or 15%, but the, um, so a lot of them, if there's like, you know, a little bit of expenditures left in certain lines, we can carry that over for one year. So we should be okay, um, getting everything done this year. My networks on all of that with, um, Diane to make sure we're, we're tracking all of the carryover. We still have that bottom one, that 356,000. I just reminded, um, Brian Faragor about this. This was the, uh, the indoor air quality one. We have to liquidate that one by the end of next, uh, by the end of 2026. So I'm working on that. Special education update, I didn't put anything in here on the special education update, but two things. One, there's good news and bad news for special education. The bad news is right now, we are tra, we are, we are projecting to be over in our out-of-district tuition. There's a couple additional, um, one was like, uh, I think it might have been two actually that were like, um, aging in, that we didn't quite know about during budget season that are now hitting the threshold where we're now financially responsible for their programs and are gonna have to go to out-of-district, uh, programs. The good news is our circuit breaker claim from last year was significantly more than normal. So we gotta get that to be all approved. But it looks like if we needed to this year, if we, if being over in out-of-district tuition, um, occurs, we could probably tap into our circuit breaker if we needed to. And it's not gonna hurt us really like long-term because we know, we always, we always use circuit breaker sort of like a, a year in, in behind. Because our claim went up so much this year, if we had to dip into it a little bit this year, if there was a shortfall, it's not gonna like, um, impact us from a revenue standpoint in building the FY25 budget, FY26 budget, excuse me. We still would have to account for, we still have to look at the tuition projections. So from a cost perspective, expense perspective, we'd still have to budget for it. But it's not gonna hit us twice, um, if we need to do that. We might not need to do that. There are some things, as I mentioned, like IA postings and things like that. A lot of times it ends up happening is if a student might go out of district, there might be, you know, maybe that student was supported by an IA or we had an IA sort of in that program that maybe now with an opening, we're not gonna fill that. So there's some other things that we'll see in the wash. We do budget, you know, a couple of different placeholders here and there for some unknowns. So we'll have to see it all. Once we, we'll get a better projec, we'll get a better understanding in a couple of months once we really find out who's here, who's not here, what are the bills? Because it's always a mystery that first day of school on, who actually walks through the door and who you try to track down and find out they moved somewhere and all that kind of stuff, so.
Steve, was there anything in like process and procedure that could have, was there any learning from, like you had said, you kind of found out late? Is that just sort of the nature of the beast with these things sometimes? Or is there anything that we can learn from a process and procedure perspective that gives you a little bit of, you know, advanced understanding on what those costs will actually be versus them dropping too late for you?
I think, um, no. I mean, I think it's probably fairly expected. I think, I think one of the decisions that I made was to sort of roll the dice on this a little bit. When we had to cut so much out of our budget, one of the things we did was we cut some of those placeholders out of special education. And then it seems like this year might have been a little, it's like then this year we got hit with a couple of them and we're like, "All right, we'll see how, you know, it goes." But there's still some, you know, there's still some placeholders in vocational tuition. There's still some placeholders and that kind of, so that's what I'm saying. It's not a panic. It's just a, it's just a, a thing we're watching right now. And we'll, as we, as we, as we start getting the invoices and we start doing the encumbrances, we'll keep an eye on it. And, uh, if we have to make any adjustments, we will. But I think it's not, like I said, it's not a panic mode. It's just something we're on the radar right now. Building committee project, we have the next building project, building committee meeting? Anyway, I think I said that wrong. Uh, tomorrow at 6:30 is the next meeting. Um, I did just put a map in here to see if you can see. This map has a bunch of red squares on it. Those are all, uh, test whorings that they did. So if you actually, if you actually drive out, you can see, uh, around the very end loop, there's a little white square on the driveway, on the parking lot with a little hole in the middle with like a little bit of new asphalt on it. That was one of the places that they, that they, uh, tested. Uh, and then out in the field, you can see some white stakes here and there. That's all testing for, now they're testing for like the footings and that kind of stuff to make sure that the, the soil type and everything is, is what they expected from the other, uh, the other readings. So I don't have the, I don't have the answers to this. I don't know if we'll get a report on this tomorrow at the meeting or not, but these were done, um, I think last week. So they're moving along. They've done the geothermal testing, which was a deep well. They've done these testings, which I think were all, I think they, they varied in depth depending on going down as far as what they were looking for. And then, um, besides that, we've had some other meetings. We, we had a, there's other meetings that we're revisiting kind of. There was a meeting with the police and fire chief again, uh, last week just to review life safety stuff, to make sure we have everything involved in the building that they're looking for. And there was a meeting, um, last week with the, uh, oh, with the landscape green engineers just to make sure that we're all on board for the same type of design. I think there was a lot included in their initial one that we're trying to sort of say, and Brian Faragor was on the same call, we're trying to balance of, you want it, you want it to look nice, but you also need it to be something that you're gonna be able to maintain. It's not gonna become something that's just, you know, taking 50 trees down in 10 years or something like that. So we're trying to balance that and make sure we, and make sure there's some other stuff. You know, there are like water, uh, retention type places that might need to be there according to civil engineers, making sure that those types of places are in the right, you know, locations where it works for us. We don't want to have standing water next to the playground and that kind, you know, that kind of stuff. So just kind of looking at those things. So that was a good meeting. And they're re, uh, making some adjustments. And then I think next week, we might have a meeting with, um, custodial staff again, really trying to go over some of the, um, building operations type things, just to make sure. So there's, it's kind of a lot of the same type of meetings that we did in the original design phase when it was sort of coming up with the original design for the building. It's almost like we're kind of rehaving those meetings to make sure nothing's changed as they're starting to put together like bid specs and stuff. Um, and then those meetings, any, anything that does change, all go through the, uh, the building committee as a whole. So, and then the permanent building committee is the one that has the actual approval for any of that.
I think Kelly sent out an email for us to start putting the schedule together for like the community piece of that too coming up.
Right, that's another one. Yeah, we invited you to the community one and tried to get some of that because that's one of the ones that they wanna, um, look at is sort of, you know, in terms of where do we want? Access points, right? Where do we want these things? What do we need? Yeah. All right. So I think that's all I have.
Great, thank you. So for our subcommittees, other than, I'm just gonna go to the second bullet first because it looks like the safety committee meeting has been scheduled, which is great. And I think for the rest of them, we'll probably, maybe we have a role of just looking at the calendar for the next couple and figuring out, and to schedule first meetings.
Yeah.
For all subcommittee meetings, I know the email was sent out around, um, starting to set up if folks are, where folks are interested in touring the buildings like we typically do this time of year, um, with Brian, so.
So I don't know if you guys, how you guys want to handle it. I know in the past, a lot of times, you know, each of you have just sort of maybe picked a different building and you walk through with Brian. You're certainly welcome to do that. If there's something different that you wanted to try to do, I'm sure he's open to it. But I know Kelly got some of those dates for you guys already to try to, uh, set that up so we can go through and just make sure that you guys are aware and happy with the condition so we can get that going. Some of those other ones, like policies and procedures, budget and finance, curriculum instruction, like those, we'll, we'll probably wait a little bit till the year gets going. Maybe start those up in maybe October or something like that and then, uh...
Do we want to use the typical format that we used last year for marketing? Do we want to try to just like piggyback it onto the front end of a school committee night? So that way it's not a secondary night?
Yeah, that's probably fine, yeah.
So we'll look at the calendar for that then.
I did make one negotiations note on there that says CTA evaluation agreement, annual review. Believe it or not, it says in the CTA evaluation agreement that it will be reviewed annually. So this is my, uh, seventh year here and I think it's the, well, it's the third year, if you count the COVID year. So I think it's the third year we've looked at it. So we, uh, yeah, so we went through, but it was good. Brenda and her team went through and kind of looked at it and they just sent me some proposed changes. I looked at it, reviewed it with the admin. We just went back and forth. So I think we're good as far as, um, mostly what we did was just sort of trying to update the document that was written, um, way back when, originally written back when the, the system was new and really tried to update it now to really kind of match really how it's evolved in practice. You know, there were some things in there that were just, uh, they were written clearly before anyone had done it. And now that we're doing it, it's just we needed to clean it up a little bit. So I think we've got it, uh, cleaned up and hopefully we'll be, we'll be good to go. And it's better than it was. It's not really significant changes. It's more just adopting the current practices. And then we'll, uh, if there's any significant changes, we said that there's contract negotiations this year so we can bring those up then if we have any proposals.
Anything under old business?
I just want to make sure we're clear on the school committee email. If we get an email, if someone emails the school committee, it still goes through you?
Yes, it comes to me and typically I email it to the chair and...
Oh, okay.
To Brett. And he reviews it and says, Sirmak, do you want nothing?
Am I supposed to be chucking these?
No.
You are good, sir.
And then the other thing, I think our picture on the website is outdated. I think we need a new picture with the updated board.
Where you just close on Monday, or next Monday.
Or whatever, next meeting.
It's still the individual.
Oh, it's individuals.
Oh, it's just the individuals? Oh, I thought there was a group picture there.
There wasn't a group, we can do that though.
Didn't we just take one recently?
Let's...
Did you have a picture or something?
Not since Bill.
Not with me.
Matt, you know, a really great photographer too.
Yeah, yeah, I could probably talk to her right before I go to sleep.
Jan did take a picture on graduation, but I don't know where.
Yes, that's where it was. It was graduation at Town Hall.
Let's, we'll, we'll double check the website and just make sure that we got to, if there's anything we need to refresh.
Okay.
The only other thing I had under old business was, Steve, is there an update on, I know we opened up school choice spots for grades. Have folks taken advantage of that? Have we got requests on school choice? Are we, have we fulfilled those spots like?
We opened up, I think, two in kindergarten that we anticipated would go to sibling preference and they did. Both of those were filled in right away. We've had a couple school choice at the high school level, two or three at the high school level.
I think it was like two per grade.
Yeah.
There was one grade we didn't do any.
It was like, I think it's like seventh and up, we accepted a couple per grade and below, most of them, but we haven't, we still, it hasn't been many. No, but the kindergarten, yeah.
There's spots, a couple spots here and there that could be...
Most in the upper grades, that's it, yeah.
Yeah, I know we spent some time on that, so we're just curious to get an update on.
I can get you, by next meeting, we can probably do a, an exact update for you on that.
Cool. Anything on our new business? Being none, I will take a motion for adjournment.
I never had that one.
Just a second.
I was sick of that. I had the motion, I was going to go.
Thank you, guys.
I'll tell you, I think we had a lot in this packet and we still got that under now. That wasn't that.
I got the stack.
Steve's got us on the summer.
It's going to be a long...
Finally getting back to the way that things were before. Steve, I also know why you got us on the summer chairs. What happened to that trans one you gave us for a little while?
You know what it is? It's Joe Haney. Joe Haney set you guys up when she's...